Hit it again. And now you're recording.
Is that kind of like the pack that you'd use in the town hall? Some way or thing?
Yes, a little different.
Do we have to do this announcement?
Are we restarting?
Sure. Do we have to do the announcement about Amherst Media?
Um, sure. All right, can you just read what's... Welcome everyone to the November sixteenth meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. This meeting is being broadcast by Amherst Media for the benefit of the home public. That's on Channel seventeen on many people's table. It's also being, an audio recording is being made by town staff for the purposes of preparing minutes and if anybody is interested in listening to it. Is that right? The first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes from October nineteenth. Any...
November second.
And now I'm looking. Yes. November second, November second. The second time I've done that. Any comments from the board on the minutes? Corrections, complaints?
Compliments?
Compliments!
Well done. There's a lot of material there.
I move we approve the minutes of November second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I think, am I wrong Connie, that you weren't actually at the meeting?
Oh, you're right, it shouldn't be voting. That's correct. This is our last meeting?
Yeah.
Correct, I take back my...
She's abstaining.
I changed my vote to abstain, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
You watched it on TV and it felt like you were in there, right?
No, what you're doing is I was elsewhere than not.
Okay.
Sorry, I did that. Yeah, let's keep this up.
Okay, this is the signing of the minutes. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is town meeting articles. That should actually be in the singular, I believe. Because I think the only article remaining to be discussed by town meetings are seventeen, which has been proposed by the planning board and represented. Mr. O'Keefe?
I can report with respect to Article sixteen that it did come up last week and it passed. I believe unanimously. I'm not sure unanimously or not, but there was no, there were no major issues associated with it. So, that one is done.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update, Mr. O'Keefe. So, there are a number of emails that have gone around about potential changes to the Article seventeen tonight, in various ways it might be divided. And as I understand it, the only piece of it that has currently been moved to be split off is two of the definitions that were proposed to be added to the general zoning bylaw, which were the definitions for apartment and townhouse. I believe those, someone, is it Ford? Is Ford? Is going to be moving to split those off and consider them separately because they're deemed important to another piece of the zoning code. If anybody has more information about that.
That's accurate. I believe that the intention is that the moderator will call on, well, he'll call on me to make the motion and then Rob to speak to it. And then before we get into debate about the article itself, his intention is to call on Barbara Ford to make the motion that he just suggested to split the definitions of those two art, items. And then to vote on that amendment, meaning those two items separately from the rest of the article before we really proceed into debate about the article itself.
And do you know anything about the reasoning that Ford has for making that proposal?
The reason that those two definitions were, one definition was added and one definition was modified, was in response to concerns that Helena Greenbaum raised fairly early in the process about the definition for townhouses and apartments and being able to distinguish between the two uses. She said that that had been an issue for them in more than one case before the ZBA and that the bylaw didn't provide clear guidance on how to distinguish between townhouses and apartments. And so, that was sort of a technical deficiency that she was looking for us to address, in part because parts of this Article seventeen deal with townhouses and apartments and how they're regulated in the new village center zoning districts. So having definitions is both helpful, having accurate definitions for both of those is both helpful with respect to the new zoning and with zoning in existing parts of town. So, we agree with that and that's why the definitions are there. At this point, I think there's concern about the prospects for the whole article and so ZBA's feeling is that those definitions are important and useful on their own right and they'd like to have them defined. So they'd like a separate vote on those, which seems reasonable to me.
Well, it sounds like it might be...
I may, the amendment that is proposed, they're going to move to divide, they're going to move to amend, then they're going to vote on that, the amended two definitions. The amendment is to remove what really is essentially a vestigial phrase from the apartment definition and it will do no, from staff standpoint, will do no harm and will probably make the definition clearer, less confusing. There, the phrase in question refers to apartments as being, units in an apartment building as being predominantly used for residential purposes and which raises the possibility that there might be other uses. And there was never any intention that there would be other uses other than things that are accessory to an apartment use, boiler rooms, laundry rooms, that sort of thing. So this will actually help clarify, the intended amendment will help clarify the definition.
Thank you. Follow up, if Amherst at some point wanted to have, wanted to permit live work units, would that then possibly be a conflict, would be a change that you just described or would that be considered an accessory use?
Live work units are proposed as a new principal use, standalone principal use under the Article seventeen and this would not affect that. They're, they're already in the proposed language as a separate use.
Yes.
I just wonder, there, I see that Melissa Poro is over there and she might want to come this way a little bit so that she can hear, because we don't have microphones tonight. Looks like you're the only guest.
Grab a chair.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay. So, beyond that, does anyone have any further discussion about the article to be brought before town meeting tonight? Miss Mr. Tucker?
I think it likely, although I have not heard any specific proposal, nor do I believe the moderator has yet spoken to anyone, that someone will move to turn the zoning along Montague Road back into its current zoning or, in fact, not to make the change. And there are a couple of issues with that. One is that in the process of creating the new zoning districts, the NAVC district and the RVC district, the boundary between the two was moved and rationalized, whereas before it had partly been in response to corners of properties and then in responses, it passed north to a generalized setback from the road and cutting across property boundaries. The proposed new boundary moves for the most part slightly to the east and at the southern end of it, next to the river, it in fact moves west. So, two, two things will happen if the motion, if a motion is made to simply leave the zone the way it is along Montague Road. One, if there is no accompanying motion to not include the overlay district, which is a part of what's being proposed, then there will be a, an anomaly in the form of the Coles Homestead, which currently is in the, proposed to be in the NAVC district. It is not currently proposed to be in the overlay district because the NAVC district includes the form-based regulations. So you might end up with a circumstance where you would have form-based regulations along most of the residential properties, which would then be an RN along Montague Road, but no form-based regulations on the Coles Homestead, which would be a strange thing. Further, because of the disparity between the two boundaries, unless other steps were taken, it's not clear to me what they would be, because this all came up kind of late, you would end up with a lozenge of vestigial commercial zoning just north of the river between the frontage of the Puffer property on Sunderland Road, which would be in the NAVC, and the frontage of the Puffer property on the Montague Road, which would be in RN. And it would be the only COM commercial district anywhere. This would be an odd shaped piece running north and south. Additionally, if in fact the motion was made to change back to RN and not include any of the form-based overlay districts on it, although this is not an anomalous situation in terms of making confusion with the map, that would then be the only residential entrance to the village center that does not have village center residence zoning on it, so that you would have, it would be anomalous in that sense. I don't think any of these things necessarily preclude someone from, from making a motion to return to the neighborhood residence zoning underneath, but it will create some anomalous circumstances and would be inadvisable for, for those reasons. And I wanted to sort of sketch out for you what the moving parts of that are. That's one. Second, there may well be a, a motion to divide, as we had previously discussed, between North Amherst and Atkins Corners. If that happens, the moderator is inclined to make the division in two, with Atkins Corners and the form-based regulations in one piece and anything having to do with changes in North Amherst in the other piece. Just so that you know, previously we discussed a division of three and then combining things. And this simplifies that. You'll recall that the la, previously that the board heard a proposal from the zoning subcommittee to consider itself, sort of proactively, since there was some suspicion that others would move it, to change the regulation of townhouses in the NAVC district from site plan review approval to special permit. And the other change was to more selectively and carefully change what is now proposed to be RVC on Montague Road with those new dimensions to RN underneath, but retaining the overlay district. In the first case, I think there, I think there is some increased urgency to the notion of possibly changing townhouses from site plan review approval by right to special permit. There is, there would remain the possibility that someone would attempt to do what was essentially a townhouse project, a large townhouse project. It was all one use essentially, and that's not the intent of the, of the district. The district's intent is that there be a mix of uses. I think that the board would be, since it would be a site plan review approval if this was adopted, would be in a position to deny the permit on the basis that it was violating the intent of the, of the district. But that's more of a stretch than having a permit that allows you to say, here are the very specific reasons why this specific proposal could be denied or strongly conditioned and modified. So I would simply put before you that of those two previous amendments, in particular the townhouses from site plan review to special permit is something I would ask you to consider. Finally, thirdly, it's my understanding that there'll be a presentation tonight by some asserting that the concept plan that the Cecil Group developed out of the workshops for North Amherst, which included portions of Montague Road and portions of Coles Road as being described as a rural residential corridor, was in fact an attempt to describe the intended uses there, not just the design character, which is what Mr. Cecil has asserted in response to that question in the past. And that therefore, that the planning board's proposal to change the zoning along Montague Road to RVC is a, you know, violation of the earlier concept. And I'm not going to argue that one way or the other, I just want you to know that that argument will be made and you might want to be prepared to respond to. So that, that's at the moment all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So it sounds like we may have a variety of of motions and certainly discussion tonight. If there's no further discussion about the town meeting article, I guess we'll just have to play it by ear, as they say.
Questions?
Ms. Kruger?
Do we have an opportunity now to take positions as a board on some of these options so that instead of speaking individually, we would be able to have a position?
You, you have that, if I may, Mr. Jared, you, you have that ability. I would remind you that the, the six members who were present last time could not reach unanimity on these, many of these same things. If you changed your mind or you could do whatever you wish, but I'll just provide that setting for your consideration.
Does anyone have strong feelings about any of these and want to make any proposals? Mr. Crown?
I would like to move that the board proactively change the proposed zoning of townhouses from SPR to SP in its portion.
Tucker? Any further discussion? Ms. Kruger?
I, I have some feelings about that, I haven't thought about it a whole lot, but I think whenever we have an opportunity to do, that's our housing development, it's done with some constraints such as the performance zoning allows in terms of parents. I think we're much more likely to have the housing actually happen in my experience when we add more stringency to the review, like special permit instead of site plan review, it makes it much, much harder to actually produce the housing and to create predictability for a developer. I'm very eager to see more housing options across the whole town, so I'm reluctant, not that I couldn't be convinced, but I'm reluctant to easily go from site plan review to special permit.
I think it's highly likely that the failure to make this change will result in the article failing altogether. So, so we can let somebody make the motion from the floor and, and and if that motion fails, that is if it fails to get fifty percent, if, if a lot of people share your, share your, your view that, that we should be promoting housing somehow, then I, I think that it will sink the whole proposal. And so the question is, how important is townhouses as site plan review rather than special permit? How important is that to the overall vision? And, and my feeling is that it's not, it's not the crucial step. The crucial step actually is promoting a mix of, of uses there. And what I think that does, what I think site plan review does is, is it favors townhouses over, over a mixed-use building. So, I, I think it's, it's, it's defendable, I don't completely disagree with you, but I think it's, it's in, in the interest of the article and, and certainly it's, it's what people expect and want. I think it'd be preferable to, to go that way.
Thank you, Mr. Crown. Uh, yes.
I agree with both of you and I'd also add that even though I was absent at the last meeting and, but the several previous meetings, that our discussion on this is that, you know, particularly in North Amherst, the residents, I think, would look at this as the planning board is listening to people and that there's, you know, just a huge clouding of this good proposal, the form-based zoning changes with, you know, issues about student housing, which, you know, are just behavior-based and not necessarily zoning-based. And so I think that this would show good faith, I think it would show listening and, and I think developers, you know, would just, you know, although I don't, again, totally disagree with you either Connie, developers would just, you know, need to read and, and have the wise counsel of the planning department before they would venture on to whatever it is that they want to propose. I think the, the whole part of, with our master planning and the inherit, not inherit, but the subsequent zoning changes that are being proposed, it's going to open up opportunities anyway and I think that they're, they're ready to, you know, I don't think that would be a detriment to people, to folks, to builders and contractors and developers and investors, whatever.
Thank you, Sandra. I just, I'm going to step in for a second and just to read the definition of townhouse that we're proposing here. "Is a residential use consisting of one or more buildings containing no fewer than three nor more than ten attached dwelling units, each of which has a separate private entrance on the ground level, and where no building is more than three stories in height. Individual townhouse dwelling units extend from foundation to roof and make consists of more than one floor, with each unit having fully exposed walls on at least two sides for access, light, and ventilation." So, just to be, I mean, in my understanding of this, for instance, Puffton Village is townhouses, because no apartment is over another one, right? So, I guess I'm seeing everybody's viewpoint, but I am seeing the possibility for what amounts to, you know, an apartment complex going in, not what we think of as quaint townhouses, right? And to me, that seems like a case for, for a special permit, so I guess I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Fisher. Mr. O'Keefe?
I was agreeing, but I don't know whether it came through that way or not, but I was saying special permit would be the way to go.
So, I'm going to kind of argue both sides of this, because I, I see both sides that people are expressing. Just to follow up on your point, David, yes, but in the areas that we're talking about, the form-based regulations come into play also and place significant limitations on what you can do in a multi-unit residential building. They, they speak to needing to have a mix of unit types, one, two, and three bedrooms. They effectively prohibit units that are larger than three bedrooms. They require all the, the aspects of the form-based design, which does place limitations on your ability to have, you know, what you described as, you know, the student-focused, puffin villagey kind of development complex. It would be more difficult to do that with the form-based regulations. In addition, the density that you get under, the maximum potential density with townhouses, because each unit does have to go from the floor to the ceiling, is significantly less than what you could get with apartments. And so that was, the, those, the combination of those factors was what really led to us regulating via site plan review for townhouses, special permit for apartments. The flip side of that, though, is, is I agree with the, the idea that it's possible that something could go in, that something could be proposed that we're not really anticipating. This is all new, the regulatory framework for the form-based code. And none of this is written in stone. If we come up with something that is working and we have demonstrable good results on the ground from the year or a couple of years of working with it, and we can see that there's a need for townhouses there and that they're being held back by the special permit requirement, we could go back and change that and presumably folks would be supportive of that at that point, if they liked what was happening on the ground. I see the change from no, which is where we currently are for both townhouses and apartments, to special permit, I see that change as being actually quite a, a large step. And so we would be taking that large step and allowing the possibility of having them there. The change from special permit to site plan review to me is slightly less significant than that big step from no to special permit. So, I, I think I come down on the side of special permit being acceptable and at least as a starting point for getting a start.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Can I ask a quick question? Rob, you said that it would make easier to build townhouses than mixed use, I think, or something like that. Would, is mixed use a special permit? Mixed use is site plan review.
So, I think it doesn't really incentivize one versus the other in terms of the permit requirements, right?
Well, yeah, it, it, not necessarily, but, but, but I think what, what the divide is between townhouses and apartments. So if you, if you, if somebody wants to build a housing development and they look at the, at the use chart and says one is SPR and one is SP, then it, then it prefers townhouses. And that's what the intent was. The intent, in fact, was we want townhouses and not apartments. But what, what it does inadvertently is say townhouses are the same level as, as a mixed-use building. And I think we actually, I would like to actually promote mixed-use building rather than residence-only.
I'll just, well, a question and a comment. This change would also then apply to Atkins Corner as well. So we're not, we're not just changing to address a concern in a particular neighborhood, we're changing the whole proposal in that way. I would, I wouldn't have a lot of hesitancy if we said in a couple of years, we'll ask to go to special permit if the site plan review wasn't working. When you go from something more relaxed to, to something harder to achieve in a permit, but when we're talking about in a couple of years, if site plan review doesn't work, we'll go to SPR over, we'll have confidence in that going to change. Nonetheless, if, if there's a feeling from most of the board that they want this change, I'm not going to stand in opposition, but I, I don't believe it would be very simple to go from special permit back to site plan review.
I just wanted to note that NAVC and AC are two different zones, so you could conceivably have it be special permit in one district and site plan review in another district.
Certainly be a preference of mine if we're going to roll into that.
So just to respond to that, I think that you're absolutely right. It wouldn't necessarily be easy to go in and change that permit requirement in the future. It's, it's possible and we could, we could try. But nor, nor is it easy to undo something. If something gets developed under site plan review that is found to be objectionable, it's there and you're stuck with it, so that's why I'm a little bit more inclined to be cautious.
Yes, I think what's critical is to get this in play, you know, get a chassis in play, get the form-based zoning in play that we can tinker with. So if, if it's the opinion of those with, you know, better knowledge than I have that this modification will get at least form-based zoning into play, possibly. Yeah, I mean, more into play or, then I, I would support it. But I, I actually totally agree that if I were a developer, the prospect of going through, of work and not having something approved, I would probably, you know, take my investment somewhere else versus site plan review, where I know eventually I'll get, get to build my, you know, my project. But I'd rather see it in play with this fixed or, you know, maybe this is right, maybe the SP is the right way to go, you know, tinker with rather than starting from scratch.
I know we have a motion on the table on this, but is there an opportunity to modify that to first see if we want to... Um, I know we have a motion on the table, um, on this, but is there an opportunity to modify that to first see if we wanna do it for North Amherst and not Atkins Corner, and then if that doesn't succeed, that we then take, take this motion up again in some way. I don't have to technically process it.
I believe, I believe the question is to, to ask, uh, Mr. Crowder, he amended his motion to, um, apply the, uh, special permit process to townhouses in the North Amherst and leave it site plan review in the South Amherst. Is that correct? Connie, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
No, I would, I think it should be SP in both. Explain why.
Sure.
Um, I think, um,
Because.
Atkins, Atkins Corner, the only business at Atkins Corner, the only retail business at Atkins Corner is Atkins Market. There's actually a lot of housing there. There's a, there's a lot of students, there's a lot of retirees, and there's neighborhood there. So, so I actually think it might be even more important in Atkins Corner to say, what we really want is business, additional business, not additional business.
Uh-huh.
So.
Any, any point?
Mr. President, what do you have?
I was just saying, I think that's a good point. Maybe it should be the same for both, at least to start with.
And we do have a motion on the table, um, in a second. Is there any further discussion before we bring this to a vote? Okay.
I just wanna make sure that the, the motion is for both neighborhoods to be, uh, special permit.
For, for townhouses.
Yeah. This is in the A B C district and the A C district, yeah.
So, is this a, if this is, if we vote yes on this, this is a recommendation to town meeting that be amended? Or we're, we're amending our recommendation?
I believe this would be a motion to have Mr., probably Mr. O'Keefe, move this amendment, um, on, on the floor. So the town, the town meeting can consider it.
Wouldn't be a recommendation of this body in response to someone from the floor making?
I, I, it's a matter of.
It's a question for all of the.
At a degree.
Yeah, my intent was actually to, to move an amended motion, because I think that it, it's inevitable that this motion will come up. It's not, it's not a question, it's, somebody won't move it and I think it'd be better for us to move it, because I think it's the right thing to do. Regardless, that's, that's the way, that's the way the article should be run forward. Um, I think it would not be, it would be distracting to, to debate that instead of the article.
So what I would, I, it would be I move in terms of the article except to change, uh, the permit regulation for townhouses in, in A B C and A C from, despite, by review to special permit.
And that's in the zone, is it, what's that, the use chart? Yes. Okay. All right, if there's no objection, I'll bring it to the board now. All, all in favor of, of?
It's sad I wouldn't block this.
You're the only resident of Powtawa.
Um, and no, no one opposed or abstaining? Uh, other discussion of the town meeting article, that's primary reason here, so speak now or forever hold your pieces please. Mr. Crowder.
Um, there, there are other things that we have to consider that Mr. President has, has listed. And, and so the question is, do we wanna have a specific response to possible new motions? Or, or do we just wanna assume that our, our original motion to recommend the article covers that? Um, I think there are, there are reasons, I think, to take, um, make a specific statement about removing the RVC and possibly RVF, um, zones or overlays from Montague Road. I, I think there's also, there's also a, a strong movement building to re, refer this article as, as not complete. Um, citing a, a whole bunch of, of reasons, um, some of which are, are actually valid, namely that there are typos.
Oh, forgot to.
Yeah, I know, but it's, but it's, but it's, it's, it's proof that, that, um, you know, that, that we didn't do all of the work that could be done. Um, and, um, it, it will be difficult for me to assert that the planning board, uh, completely reviewed this article and decided that, yes, it actually wants that typo in there, you know, such and such typo. So, so I would like a statement that, um, these typos are irrelevant to, to the, to the, um, content of the article, that, um, that we think that it is better to have brought the article forward now rather than spend two months proofreading it. So, those, those kinds of things.
Now, I would, if I may.
You had your hand up.
Mr. President, I would simply note that, uh, at least one of those typos which appears in the amendments to the standards and condition for apartments, uh, has been judged by the moderator to be Scrivener's errors, that the, there is enumeration and it's clear that the number that is in there doesn't exist and that the component numbers are intending, based on the text, to refer to a specific existing section. So as far as he's concerned, that's just a Scrivener's error and not, not anything of substance. I don't know what other ones people are referring to, that, that one at least is still.
I'll just really take strong objection to people pointing typos as proof that we're not ready. I mean, I'm a terrible typist. I can, I can remember times when the revision and the revision and the revision of zoning had typos. New ones, old ones, the zoning bylaw has typos. So, yeah, they should be gotten out of there, but that is in no way proof of, of being done or prepared or complete with anything. So, I just sort of push this.
The Constitution has typos, I would imagine. I can't tell you which ones.
They were right.
Both hands, right?
Yeah, they meant, they meant bear arms, they meant, uh, bear arms.
Oh, no.
Roll up your sleeves.
I, I mean, I agree. I think that, I agree with, uh, Ms. Kruger that is, that the typos are not relevant to this. And they don't affect the, the, um, utility of it, they don't affect the intent of it, and they don't affect the level of review. Um, the fact that a typo escaped, or, I mean, I will admit to not having proofread this as I would proofread a legal brief. I'll admit to that. But I don't think that if there are typos, misspellings, you know, gram, grammar, errors of grammar, we've, you know, in the past, we've considered errors of grammar and punctuation errors in our minutes to the meetings. And those changes were in no way relevant either. So, um, I see a point that someone's going to bring this up. Um, yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
So I'd just like to agree with everything that's been said and to point out that, um, at the zoning subcommittee, we had a discussion more or less along these lines back in October. The warrant language had to be finalized in early October, um, and I brought to the subcommittee the notion, my own sense, to, to get their viewpoint on it, that after finalizing the warrant language, that my preference would be to not come to the floor of town meeting as we often do with a motion that says, "I move in terms of the article except for eleven paragraphs of detailed typo changes and tweaks and minor changes." We did that last year with development modification for a big and complicated article and made it bigger and more complicated by doing that in the motion. That didn't seem to me to add any actual value in, in the sense of correcting things, which David points out, um, are of no consequence, and just served to, to muddy the waters. And so the consensus that we had, I think it was consensus on the subcommittee, was to essentially endorse and adopt that approach and to not be necking at this for the month and a half that has passed since then. Um, and so that's one of the reasons that we haven't been digging through and trying to correct every comma and, um, cross T that, that we find in there. So, um, it, as I said earlier with respect to the potential for making changes in the future, we're gonna be having town meeting for quite a while going forward in the years to come and we'll have pl- plenty of opportunity to fix things. So, that does probably concern me at all. So is the, um, yes?
Just real briefly, I just think that it's good that we talk about it now and it's kinda like role-playing, because when it, if and when it comes up, we're all like, yeah, yep, and they're thought about, talked, and, and, you know, sort of spoken it out loud rather than, you know, I just, you know, I think that's good. Because we've spent a lot of time on it, but a lot of people in the room have not. And so, you know, wanna distract from the essence of what it is, you know. It's not a, you know, it's not like a webpage or a bookie or publisher or something.
Okay, um, some of the other objections, I guess, is along, I think that I agree with what Sandra's saying that, you know, let's talk about a few of these briefly before we start. And, and so, other ones that have just been mentioned are the, um, the leaving out of the, and this one's definitely gonna come up, um, changing, not changing this area along, along Montague Road to Village Center, but instead leaving it as RN, in other words, amending the article to exempt this area north of Mill River on Montague Road from NAVC, no, from Village Center Zone, right, Village Center?
RVC.
RVC, residential, yeah. So, um, what's our, what's our answer to that at this point?
I'll remind the board that at our last meeting, the zoning subcommittee presented a unanimous recommendation in favor of that. The board decided not to take action. We didn't actually vote one way or the other, so that's just the history of it. Our position hasn't changed. We haven't meant to discuss it since then, so I guess that recommendation still stands unless the other two folks have any input on that.
Senator, can you clarify that? You, you said, you know, there was some, just this and that and it's, and I, I didn't follow the, because I wasn't at the last meeting. So the subcommittee made the recommendation to remove, uh, to revert back to the, our, the residential.
Retain.
Oh, retain, RN, right.
Because it's currently RN.
It's currently RN.
We're proposing changing it to RVC.
Okay, and the reason that the planning board didn't vote on it or just took it under advisement or just was it non-issue or, or?
I can read from the minutes.
Okay.
Um, "Mr. O'Keefe moved to recommend to town meeting that the planning board support changing Article seventeen to remove the proposal to change to RVC the properties along Montague Road and to return them to RN." Mr. Parsons seconded. "There was discussion about the motion. Mr. Rosnoy and Mr. Schreiber expressed their opinion that it was a mistake to make this motion. However, it would be good to be prepared if others were to make a motion on the floor of town meeting. Mr. Schreiber supported going forward with the article as it is since it has been vetted and has already received support from the full planning board. Mr. Weber agreed with Mr. Rosnoy and Mr. Schreiber, stating that these are good ideas, that they should come forth at town meeting. He was hesitant to make changes to the article at this time prior to town meeting." Mr. O'Keefe withdrew his motion. Yes, Ms. Brestrow.
I had a question about your statement, um, I wondered if it included the Cole property at the corner of Cole's Road and Montague Road? Or was it just the area that was being rezoned to RVC?
It did not include that. So the proposal that we made would not have made any changes to the boundaries of the proposed NABC district, which does cover the property that you just mentioned.
My recollection was that the amendment was phrased in such a way as to change the proposed RVC area as proposed, back to RN, which would then retain those, those new boundaries and retain the, um, Village Center form overlay district on top of it.
And, and so that discussion was made without knowledge of the map issues that you just raised now. Well, we had, we had knowledge of the map issue that would arise if we were to change the NABC zoning on the Cole's property. We were aware of the fact that that would leave a hole without the form-based overlay. And that was one of the reasons that we didn't recommend that. But the issues that Jonathan discussed tonight regarding the western boundary there, um, we haven't really contemplated what the impact of that would be.
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
A, a quite a question, just to stir up discussion on this. Would this, would, um, make it, making an amendment, I mean, the, what you proposed, Jonathan, at the last meeting, but the board didn't take any action on, if we were to do that, which would be, leave that section of Montague Road as residential, would, would that have a similar effect possibly of getting the, the bigger picture through with less angst and consternation on the, on the part of, of residents in the area that was very near and dear to their heart? That, you know, again, the, on the bigger picture for the global betterment of the world, would it be better to let this go forward? Just, I, again, I'm just sort of questioning out loud, not forming an opinion here.
Yes, Mr. O'Keefe.
So, so certainly, yes, that was a consideration. Um, you know, we've heard a lot of feedback and we received, the board received actually a petition from neighbors asking for that exact thing. And so, one of the factors that we've considered is being responsive to concerns that people have on the ground. And people have reiterated to us that they felt that they weren't being heard. They presented us with a petition asking us to not do this. And so we're faced with the choice of whether to go ahead with it or whether to, to take action based on that. And, um, and I'm just speaking for myself, but my own sense is that I, I think that the project as a whole has a lot of value and will bring a lot of fruit to the area, um, and that taking away the proposed RVC, which I still think is reasonable and appropriate. But if, if that's what it takes to give this a greater chance of achieving sort of a larger goal that we're trying for, I think that that's an acceptable compromise.
And may I just clarify, not just to get it passed for the sake of getting it passed, but to get it endorsed and, you know, supported with, with energy from folks rather than it feeling like this is something that the pla, you know, the planning zoning, whomever, has sort of, you know, forced through, but that maybe they would, um, you know, endorse it more and, and welcome it and work with it. Uh, and then there's also the integrity of the planning board is, you know, is it a, is it a squeaky wheel or are we being responsive? So again, I'm just sort of, um, throwing things up in the air.
Yes, Mr. Schreiber.
So just for balance, there are also compelling, um, counter arguments, exactly the opposite. That, and not as organized as petition, but certainly people have spoken in favor of the Old River as well. And in particular, you know, addressing that particular quarter, that, um, it's necessary for the, for the good of the, the good of the whole.
Yes, Ms. Brestrow.
Well, that, I'm, I'm sitting here kind of between both perspectives and thinking, you know, it's a little bit like reading tea leaves to decide if this change were made, then the whole larger global scene would be enhanced with, with two Village Centers. And we could be at a place where we do offer what the planning board originally came up with, um, to town meeting with the understanding that there is a strong other viewpoint that has come up in hearings and meetings and then, and offer that to town board to decide because, um, to sort of start to deconstruct what I think was, um, a sound proposal from the beginning before people who, you know, have really had a chance to weigh in, you know, from forum. And maybe our position is to explain the dialogue we've had, wanting to be responsive, thinking the original proposal of rezoning, it makes sense because, um, you, you could certainly go with that change, but it's, it's easily, it's easily cut from the narrative as we do.
I think to take a step back and process it there, to the, the background, was there a reason why this particular portion? I mean, looking at, on the map, it belongs in the NAVC district. It's in the Village Center. Um, it is abutted on three sides by NAVC and it sort of protrudes into the center of the NAVC district. Was it, my question, I guess, is that was it made RVC instead of NAVC to accommodate these same interests already?
The, the, the character of that section of the road is residential. And, and the feedback going back to the, to the very beginning of this process of the charrette that we had in North Amherst was we heard loud and clear that people on the ground there and people even elsewhere said that they wanted to preserve the resident. that people on the ground there and people even elsewhere said that they wanted to preserve the residential character of Montague Road, but that was a unambiguous message. Um, and so, extending NAVC through there would not have responded well to that message. That would, the whole point of this is to, to incorporate community will and desire, so, um, to, to have done that would have been counter to that. There have been proposals and requests to, to do that in various ways. In particular, the property on the east side of Montague Road just above the Mill River, which is the old mill building there, which has had a long history of industrial and commercial uses. At various points has been proposed or included as NAVC, as has, at some point, properties to the west. The Coles property at the corner of Coles Road is still in that category because that property also has a long history of commercial activity associated with it. But it was at the point that we were considering sort of whether or not it was appropriate to be extending NAVC along that southern portion, to go down and, um, incorporate the old mill building, or one of the proposals had that old mill section up to the entrance of Mill River as a little island of NAVC zoning across the street. We, we looked at various iterations of this and at some point decided that, that no, that wouldn't be appropriate, but that it would be appropriate to look at maybe intensifying the residential density along that stretch and the range of uses that might be allowed there, so that's how we came to that point, that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. Well, one option I guess that we have would be to, go with, with what Kruger says, we're presenting this as a whole, but we understand that town meeting, we want to make commitments. The planning board has not taken a position on bringing it to you, the town meeting, um, on that issue. That would be one way we can go. I think my, my inclination is to go in that direction, but if there's, I guess at this point, I mean, one of the discussions that's, that's not in here is that we actually did talk last meeting that we would like to have Ms. Kruger and Ms. Anderson here for this discussion, that we only had six members. Now we don't have Mr. Rosnoy.
Seven minutes away.
He'll be showing up.
He will, and he has strong opinions about this as well.
So, PVPC report.
May I, may I?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
I, uh, well, the pa, paper I have here for one, one piece of paper I can't put my hand on is that, are the minutes from the November sixteenth meeting. And someone said earlier that we had unanimously approved some other things, and I think I remember voting, my, or abstaining from this, and I can't remember. That's, that's why I don't want to go on record saying I did, on the sixteenth, I think I did abstain.
I think you did because you weren't there prior.
Prior, right, and, and that was the meeting where we had a lot of residents, you know, we had a filled room and we had a lot of.
The public hearing.
The pu, was the public hearing, exactly, and so, um, you know, having this discussion now is helping me to maybe reframe how I feel about that and stuff. So, I think it's, uh, you know, I, I would tend to be in favor of, uh, of, of, I don't know how to put it, it's the negative or the positive, not changing the zoning for that section. That's not probably the most technical of the terminology, but it's just a, you know, not putting it in a motion or anything, I'm just, again, stimulating conversation.
Just so I get the minutes, when you say you're in favor of not changing it, you're not, you're in favor of not changing the existing zoning for that area, is that correct?
The one that we're talking about, the residential, little strip right here.
You're in favor of keeping it as RN?
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, I'm agreeing with what the zoning subcommittee brought to the planning board at the last meeting, hearing it now, uh, but that, there, no action was taken, that's, that's what I'm saying. What Jonathan said. He says it so much better.
I think, there's no way to say it well, really, but you did a valiant effort. The, the, there was, I'll just put it out there because it hasn't been brought up, there is at least one, um, vocal opposition to leaving that RN. There's one landowner in the area, so this is not unanimous among the people who own these properties by any means.
It's, it's not unanimous among many of the citizens who came and spoke to, I can think of three citizens who came and, who were not property owners right in this area who were saying that they, they thought that this should, this was and always had been part of the Village Center, yeah, center of the center.
We, we have an opportunity to keep punting and not, we don't have to vote for this as such, where we could have a position formed and not have to say what the, what the vote was.
Well, we've already approved it as a whole, right?
Right, so that's.
So, we're.
So, you don't have to do anything.
We're, um, we're taking back, we're changing, you know, splitting parts of it off and doing other things. This would be one where we're actually backing off on a zoning change.
Yes.
I think we really, I'm sorry, I think we really risk, you know, the eleven amendments to be all in modification if we come in with a bunch of, you know, votes about something that we've already, you know, sent to voted on. So, yeah, so I stand on, I stand by my motion to do nothing from the.
There was a motion to do nothing at the last meeting.
Which you can get a second by.
All right.
You know, that, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's kind of, or to stand by the currently voted, yeah, that's kind of current.
Stand by what we voted on.
But.
All right, well, I, I leave it up to the, the board to see where, whether anybody's going to propose, propose a motion right now, or whether we're gonna just, as Kind says, punt. Mr. Crowder, gotta stand up first, I believe.
Um, I, I think it's, um, it does make sense to let town meeting decide what it thinks that, that area should be. Um, so I would propose not as a motion, um, but as, as a response that, uh, the planning board is, is proposing what it thinks is the appropriate zoning for this area. But if town meeting thinks otherwise, you know, that's, that's, that's.
We're all ears.
Yeah, we don't have objection to that, so, so that's, that's, that was my inclination.
Can you work that into your thirty-eight minute?
No, I, I think, I think my, my, my presentation will be, this is the zoning that they're proposing, okay, and then somebody will move, take it out. And then my response would be, whatever town meeting thinks is best is, is the way that we're gonna go, we support that, so. That's, that would be my inclination.
Yes, Mr. Carson.
What, what would happen if an amendment wasn't made to change the zoning of Montague Road, but people just said, well, because of that, we're just simply going to vote against it? Is it possible then for, for the planning board to still offer an amendment at, at the eleventh hour?
I would think so, too. I would think any member of town meeting, you know, there's a few of you here, but I can do that, we can, I, I don't.
Sim, similarly, uh, but always bear in mind that if things start to look really dire, you can always move to prefer.
Personally, I'd rather do that than start chopping it up at the end for something, but a last minute save.
Then we can fix the title.
And we can keep talking about this for six months.
Perhaps we can find someone in town meeting who's a good profredo.
Sounds like you have.
We just don't know it is.
I think we'll hear about that too.
Okay, I think we've reached consensus on this.
I think in case I'm going to turn into a punk, we need to go set up at this time.
It's six o'clock. The next item is topics not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours. You're not done yet, Tom.
There, there are a couple other areas, as I've been working on this, there's a couple other areas that I haven't heard that anyone will, um, make a motion to, to separate or remove them. But I can imagine that they would, and so I, I wanted to at least bring it up before the board so that we can have a conversation about, saying that this is our deal, we're tied into it. Um, and that's, um, the west, the east side of West Street, both above the roundabouts and below the roundabouts, either one or both. I can imagine that somebody would say, no, not this part. And so, I, I just want to touch that out there, is that, are either of those areas, um, deal breakers for the board?
Can you, I'm, I'm not sure what areas you're talking about, so.
Um, there's.
I have not right here.
May I just ask, because I do have to go, that the sub-motion to amend comes out of this and somebody tells me about that, so I can get the language moderate.
Yeah, actually, I would, I would just say that we would have the same sort of response, I'm not saying to take a motion, I'm sorry, unless somebody else wants to do that. So, it's, so it's the area to the, on the northeast part, north and east of, of the two roundabouts, that's a field now. And it's somewhat separated from the rest of the Village Center, or the proposed Village Center.
Talking about right here?
No, I'm talking about right here, this, this field.
Uh, west.
North and east.
Okay, gotcha, okay. The little north isn't on this thing, like.
So, this map is oriented with north, do you, to the top?
Yes, yep. And then the, the part from, from where the, um, from where it comes over on, on the west side of, of Atkins Quarter, so below Atkins Market, from there down south, on, on the east side.
So, for those of us who are map challenged, where is Atkins, right?
You want to hold this up, so you can.
Because the streets aren't like this right now, so I don't know where it is. Okay.
Yeah, so, yes, I'll, I'm talking about this part here, down, down here.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Do, do you know what the objections are?
Um, the objections are that there, there are streams running through there, that, um, it's, it's, again, it's a residential street right now, um, and that it's, it's disconnected from the Village Center by West Street. So, so I can imagine, and, and the other objection actually is that there's a shooting range to the south of that, that, that affects some of those properties or all of those properties, you know, in terms of noise. And so, the, some people think that it would be a bad idea to possibly increase the number of people who live there, who might be affected by the noise. So, my inclination would be similar, um, that the board make its motion as, as originally intended, but if someone moves to take either of those properties out, not to stand in the way and say that, that, that is, that either of those are crucial to the Village Center.
And again, let it come from, from the floor.
Let it come from the floor.
So, in other words, I guess, we could, one way to say that would be that we're in favor of town meeting passing whatever parts of this they want to pass.
No.
Not, not completely, because you don't want to take, for instance, Atkins out, out of the, Atkins Market out, I think that would make any sense.
Okay, yes, Ms. Kruger.
Well, maybe it was unfortunate when we said let town meeting decide on North Amherst, the way that was framed, because I think because there was a lot of discussion and points, that was one way it was framed, I felt very strongly that I would not support this with any changes, that this is solid, it's been in planning for twelve years. I think the issues that have been raised, while, you know, worthy of consideration, do, do not merit a change to this plan, and I would be very dis, I would not just say, well, this is the best we could do, but you, town meeting, you, you decide, I think that's really not our, not doing the job. So, maybe we could find another way to explain that position from North Amherst, but, you know, just, oh, whatever you want, town meeting is fine. And I don't feel that way about Atkins at all.
Yes, Ms. Brestrow.
I just wanted to point out that, um, actually, in a large part of this property here, this property that's proposed to be rezoned to AC, most of the coal property is, at least the planning department and conservation department consider a lot of it to be undevelopable. I don't know, there was a map that was floating around approximating areas that might be developable on that property and some of the frontage properties, and most of the developable area is right along the front edge. And what goes back behind those, um, little houses that are along the road is essentially undevelopable because of the wetlands issue. There's a riverfront, um, two streams that both have two hundred foot riverfront, um, areas that are, have strong limitations. Um, the northern one, perhaps you could develop ten percent of that riverfront area, but the southern one, we as staff think that you can't develop that area. Now, there is a challenge by the owner of that property against that viewpoint, and he will push his own viewpoint, but, um, anyway, all I'm saying is that very little of that area is actually going to be developable for, for much, I just wanted to share that with you.
And so, I think that's the argument for why is it crucial to, to, to be, to those, um, obviously, that's, I think it's different from the, from the field in the northeast quarter.
Uh, yes, Mr. O'Keefe.
Um, I, I agree with Connie on this, um, and I just wanted to point out that we've already looked at the southeastern portion and we've already made changes to the way, the way the map had originally been structured to address some of those same issues based on the, the streams and the wetlands. We actually scaled it back, um, and took away some area that was originally proposed as NAVC to respond to that, so I think what we have left is reasonable and appropriate, and I would be in support of, we'd be in attack also.
Any other opinions? I don't have a strong opinion either way.
So, my presentation actually, um, basically says what, what Chris said, that, that it's not really developable, but, but there's a reason why it's in the Village Center. Um, however, if someone does move, move that and, and he moves to take, take it out, um, I would prefer if some other member of the planning board defended. So, just please be ready for that, because I'm not sure that I, that I would be able to be as enthusiastic or as, as other people have suggested.
I'm just not sure that we usually use the amount that we think development aspect of staff in their analysis, that we use an, an opinion of how much is developable or how much is wetlands, whatever, considering a zoning for an area and how it fits together. And I think that's part of the early analysis, you know, looking at the area, but, well, it's not really developable anyways, so it just, I mean, I just, I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope. Um, I'd rather look at the integrity of the proposal, I don't remember all the reasons, and we probably don't want to remember why these lines are now where they are, but, um, I wouldn't really bring up the development potential or not.
So, are you, yeah, I agree, because we're, in a way, we're not really in that position to comment, because we, yeah, I mean, there's professionals that, you know, the engineers, and, well, I know you're a, that's, but people that can really drill into it and, and figure that out. I, I tend to, correctly, that we shouldn't render opinions as to whether or not it may or may not be developable.
Yes.
Just for purposes of my notes, I did not write down the time you walked in.
Six oh four and a half.
And please note that he's four and a half minutes after the time that he, uh, said that he'd be.
I'm late, four and a half minutes.
We're docking your pay.
Oh, darn.
We're, we're kind of doing what ifs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Feel free to chime in at any point. So, we have, in this one, I think, I sense that the board is less inclined to, uh, go along with, uh, or condone changes to this, these areas than we are to the North Amherst piece. Does that, I see a lot of nodding heads, okay. Next. Senator.
So, yeah, just to, to point out that, that Rob indicated that he has concerns about supporting that and defending that if push comes to shove, um, and so that's a totally reasonable position for him to be in. So, either one of us would need to address that or ask the board to just not present an opinion on, on that proposed amendment if it came on.
So, board members should feel free to raise their hands in. Sure, Mr. Greg will call on us as, if we do.
Before we leave this topic, did we ever deal with the issue of the harbor four amendment? Did we ever discuss that, as to whether or not we had an opinion about that?
Of splitting the, that's the, separating out the definition. That's the, separating out the definitions of apartment and townhouse and getting those approved first, right?
I think we did approve that.
Yeah.
Think we did? Maybe we didn't vote?
I think it came up, but I'm not sure that we ever actually, uh, dealt with it.
I think you did, but I have to find it.
We said all that, too many notes.
Yeah, you voted seven to zero. The townhouses can be by special permit.
So that's, that's a different issue, yeah.
Separating it out.
I think you're right.
Well, separating it out, yes.
When I, when I described it to you, I said that my opinion was that it was a good idea and that I didn't have any problems with it. And I think we kind of left it at that without proceeding any further.
I don't think we voted.
So. I move to support the amended definition of, um, apartments. I forget which one it is, apartments.
Wait a minute.
I think it's the amended definition of townhouses.
It's what?
Yeah, is it what?
But you pointed out that people hadn't separated it out yet.
Whether or not we even support the separating out.
We don't think that's our.
If that's not our fault.
But would we be asked an opinion on it?
No, but the moderator has already decided that he'll allow that if that motion is made.
Okay, so then whether or not we support that.
Separate.
You know, as.
So now there's an amendment on the floor to, to.
Do we support the amendment?
Yes, and so I submit that we should. Um, I think that it's a technical change and that it's entirely reasonable, and so I, I would second the motion that I think Rob just made to support it.
Okay, so we're discussing the motion. So I guess I'm the all or nothing guy. In other words, you know, love me, love my form-based only.
But.
It's, it's because, you know, that, yeah.
The issue, though, is that this is actually a split, this isn't a proposed amendment. And so any motion, any motion before town meeting can be split on the request of one member if the moderator deems that that's within the sense of the article. So the moderator has already indicated that he clearly views that as within the sense of the article. And so the motion will be made and the moderator will agree to split out this part of it. So now those two definitions will come to a vote separately from the rest of the article. We don't have any say in that, into whether or not that happens, that will happen. And so town meeting will vote on those two definitions separately. And if they vote them down, then they won't be part of the rest of the article, which would put the rest of the article in sort of an odd position. So if, if there's really no, if, if you're in an all or nothing position, you're, you're essentially needing to express support for both halves of something that will be split. We, we as town meeting members don't really get to weigh in on whether it can be split.
Okay. So I see this as an opportunity to get a small yes for the big yes. Like when I used to work for Greenpeace when I was in college and I was going to door, door to door. And the first question they would say is, hi, I'm David Weber, I'm from Greenpeace, have you ever heard of Greenpeace? And you'd get a little yes, and so you try and get another yes. So this is like that first little yes. We can get them to approve these definitions of townhouse and apartment, and it puts us on the road to success.
We don't lose anything, we just get it first.
Okay.
And if the rest, if the ship goes down, stuff like that.
I just don't like the cherry picking of the, I'm sorry, you were looking at me, so I. I just don't like the cherry picking of just parts of this and then let the meat up there unless it go down. That's okay. I hope I didn't slam the door on you.
You didn't, no, not at all.
No, when I, when you said yes, no, when you were at my door.
A little yes, yeah. Did you write the check?
Um, you might have. Yes.
Did anyone second Rob's motion?
Thank you. All right, there is a motion on the floor, and I'm not sure, can you repeat the motion, please?
Uh, to support the proposed amendment to definition of apartments.
Do we get whether it's apartments? Okay. And that, for those of us who weren't here for the initial discussion, that amendment will do, how does it change the definition technically?
The proposal that we have has an odd sentence in it, um, with respect to the definition for apartments. It says, I'll read it full, apartment, a residential use consisting of, and this is a new definition, it's not in the bylaw at all, so we're proposing adding this to our plan. And it says apartment, a residential use consisting of one or more buildings, each building containing no fewer than three nor more than twenty-four dwelling units, where the majority of such units are designed and used for residential occupancy. Apartment dwelling units may share internal accessways and entrances and need not have separate exterior entrances on the dwelling floor. So, just to be clear, there's two issues that we're talking about here. One is the fact that that definition and the townhouses will be split out, so we'll be voting on them separately. And separate from that, there's the issue of amending the definition that I just read to strike the somewhat odd clause that says where the majority of such units are designed and used by for residential occupancy. The intent of that was to recognize the fact that, as Jonathan said earlier, you might have, um, storage closets and boiler rooms and things like that in an apartment, uh, complex. But the fact is, it uses the word units, which means dwelling units. And the intention is that in an apartment, all of the units are residential. There, there's no such thing as residential units that are not designed and used for residential occupancy. So that is a, sort of, he describes as vestigial clause that really contributes nothing to the definition. And the members of the ZBA have pointed out that it just adds confusion and doesn't add any value, so.
The ultimate way of not digging is not allowed.
Sorry?
Okay, so the motion is to approve this amendment.
Support it, yes.
Is there any further discussion on this, Rob? Hold the favor. opposed, abstaining?
While I support this in concept, since I voted against the article generally, I don't necessarily vote for this.
Thank you. Next.
Speak now.
Do, do we need to discuss if somebody wants to propose to separate Atkins Corners from North Amherst?
Again, that's the moderator's call, I guess.
But if he says okay and somebody moves, that way, did you want to take a position? That, that's your question, right?
Yes.
Well, as I understand it, we sort of already took a position by adopting the thing as a whole, um, and recommending it as a whole to town meeting. So. If we back off from that, assuming that Atkins and the definitions are considered first, then that means we're doing what with respect to Amherst?
Considering it second.
Second. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to tease this apart, to figure out what's, what's really going to happen. Thoughts, anyone? Save me.
I, I, you know, I think our, I felt from the group, most of us, is that at this point, we're not picking anything else, you know, and that it's all for one, one for all. It's the, not the Three Musketeers, it's the two village centers. I mean, there'll be more village centers, right? I mean, there are, you know, I know, I live near, maybe the third one, who knows? You know, the Pomeroy Lane. But, uh, so I think we're setting, you know, something to go, I mean, this is just the beginning of the implementation of the changes needed to implement the master planning recommendations, so long thing, long statement, just to say, I think, my feeling would be that we keep it as a whole now. We've taken the salient points that need to be corrected or amended or, uh, whatever and keep it together and.
Mr. Brewer.
I do need to point out that the zoning subcommittee at our last meeting, when we talked about this issue, did present a recommendation to do that split by a two to one vote. I did not agree with that, but Bruce and Rob did. But again, the planning board took no action on that at our last meeting.
Yes, Ms. Brewer.
So I, I, I understand we voted, uh, at a prior meeting to keep them together, but if they were to be separated, not by recommendation of the board, we would still, would we still support the passes of each, the passage of each village center separately as they came up? Or would we not because they, they were no longer together?
I, I would recommend that we advocate passage of the two if it comes to that, rather than having the book be defeated.
As they come up individually.
Yes.
North Amherst isn't going to work unless the other part passes. In my opinion, if the, if the definitions of South Amherst and the form-based code don't pass, we need to recommend that the NAVC be referred back.
Yes.
Mr. Crowder?
Um, that's, that's because the, a lot of the form standards that, that the NAVC relies on would have been defeated. But I think there's another option, and that would be to reconsider part of the, the initial motion. I guess, I guess the way that, um, maybe this won't work, the way that Harrison has said that it should be moved. But the way that Mr. Tucker originally devised it, where there were three separate parts, and the first motion would consist of the first two parts, you could, you could move to reconsider defeating the first part and then combine that with the third part. But if that's not the way it's divided, um, maybe one, you know, she.
Mr. Brewer.
I agree that that would be possible as a parliamentary maneuver, um, as a practical and political maneuver, given the fact that in your scenario, South Amherst has already failed. I think that that's a fairly clear expression of the will of the body that, um, the possibility of doing a complicated parliamentary maneuver to reconsider and then split out the form-based code so that we could then apply it to North Amherst would be unlikely to be enthusiastically embraced.
Yeah. Just want to be ready for the one. Well, if that happens, I guess I'd be willing to jump on that grenade and recommend that it be referred back. If that's the will of the board in that scenario.
If this first two parts fail, tie, yes.
If it's split, if the first two parts fail.
I think, to, to then recommend referral down.
Does anyone oppose to that? Okay. Since that's consensus, okay.
Do we need a motion?
I don't.
A sense of the board.
I don't think we need a motion on that, do we? Do we? No.
So just following up on that, um, if the first two parts related to Atkins Corner do pass, and then, if, if there was a separation, then they did pass, and then we got to North Amherst separately, um, would it be a sense of the board to support North Amherst itself separated for, or not support it because it was not.
Support it, I think it would.
So we would support, so what you said, we support each, each piece as long as they're all serious.
I think so.
They don't have to all be together to have a.
That's all it's.
Just wanted to be clear.
I think that's right, I think that's right. Are there any other contingencies that we haven't talked about? What are we forgetting? Ms. Brewer.
Since you're trying to tease them out, I, I will mention that this is the last one that I'll bring up. There, there's been discussion on the listserv today regarding the possibility of splitting in a way that would leave the form-based stuff entirely as, as a separate issue and not vote or move to refer the application to North and South Amherst. And I'm not advocating that the board take a position on that because that's somewhat speculative. I'm more just informing you all that that's out there. In my opinion, that would be a strange thing to do in your zoning is to have a set of form-based regulations that don't apply anywhere. The moderator might very well decide that it's valid to vote on that set of.
I have to admit, I considered that exact thing, because the, um, once you have those in place, then you decide where to apply them, right? I mean, it makes a kind of logical sense in that you have, you build your foundation before you start putting things on it. It's been developed, though, in conjunction with these two particular areas. I mean, the, the form-based code, although I have my doubts that they wrote it up from whole cloth, was tailored at least to these particular areas, I think.
And if, if I may, it shot through with references to both North Amherst and Atkins Corner. So, um, if, if you were to take out all of that, you would leave a, you know, shell of this great set of regulations that would, would really add much or any value to the zoning model, in my opinion.
The sense that's what the design guidelines are for those areas that have, that are under design review guidelines or advisory, uh, legislative.
What would happen with the village form residence overlay difference in, in these scenarios? I mean, if, if North Amherst is split off, I assume that means everything to do with North Amherst, the NAVC, the RBC, RBF, the, um, RMC, all would be considered, is going to be considered as the second piece, the rezoning and the overlay. So we now have that on our radar. Any other issues?
I move we advance to the next topic when we join.
Okay. Um, yeah, we should try and get this done as quickly as possible so that we have a short break before we go on. The, I don't, Chris, do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Old Ben, signing of decisions, SPR twenty twelve oh zero, 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 one, Amherst Inn Company, and the accompanying, well, it's listed twice.
No, it's SPP.
SPP and SPI.
You have two, um, decisions here, cycle plan review and special permit for the Amherst Inn Company, Lord Jeffrey Inn. And if you would all sign the pages that have the red tag, and if Mr. Weber would sign also the page with the red tag, that would be helpful.
Question, Chris, this was discussed at the last meeting in November second?
Yes.
So if we weren't present at that meeting, do we still sign because we're on the board or not?
No, only the people who, um, voted, did sign.
Very good.
And there's no signature line for you, so.
Okay. Because you put something in front of me, I'm just likely to sign.
You should see a lawyer about that.
Look at the old business.
We need to always just forget the second she's going to have to drive over to Jonathan Schett's house to give her the sign next week.
I can sign a bunch of them for you if you want.
Don't press to her.
Okay. Uh, so, next issue, um, letter from Milton Cantor regarding forward place and comments on that letter. Next item, topics not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours to the meeting, prior to the meeting for Old Ben. No, nope. Letter from the PBPC regarding technical assistance. We received this letter from the PBPC. PBPC is offering free technical assistance, uh, to Amherst if we need guidance in implementing local smart growth strategies. They suggest that we select one or more strategies on a checklist, um, and, uh, pick a person as a contact. And then they will assist us as requested. Do we want to check any of the boxes where we would like to receive assistance from the PBPC? There's, there's two sort of categories here, valley vision strategies and broadband access. And valley vision strategies are of, um, sort of master plan-like in scope. Did anybody have, read these and have a, um, sense that one of them would be, one or more of them would be useful more than the others?
Do we ever get a sense as to how much time? This might be a Chris question.
I don't know how much time. I don't know how much time.
If it hours is a D hours.
If you.
Yes, please.
Um, my sense is that, um, one of the things that you get from PBPC is, um, work that will sort of help you to coordinate with other communities. You know, they're good at working across town lines to get communities working together on some of these topics. So, they may not have, I don't want to say they wouldn't have the interests of Amherst at heart, but they would be looking more at the regional, um, impact of something than necessarily focusing on the town itself. So I'm just sharing that with you because, um, oh, that's a comment that I've heard in the past, about work that they have done.
Chris, could I ask you a question? As a staff person, um, do any of these categories jump out at you as, as a professional in the field as something that, that the, uh, Amherst might take advantage of?
Well.
Yes, please.
I think transfer of development rights is something that we'd be very interested in, because we don't really know very much about that or what impact that might have on us. And it's something that we had asked the CECL group to consider as part of this form-based zoning, and they, you know, that wasn't something that they ended up, um, including. So that would be something that I would think would be useful for us.
Okay, thank you. And, and a broadband, I don't know, if, are there areas in Amherst that are broadbandless? I don't know. I, you know, I know that there are in other areas, other towns, hill towns, remote corners of various towns, but.
After Hurricane Irene, I had a couple of weeks of not being able to get.
Yeah, not counting the, uh, snowstorm, but.
Do we have, do we have a wireless bylaw? I don't think we do, do we?
We have a use category in our zoning bylaw for cell towers and wireless communication.
Which is fine, and, um, I'll just put it out there, and then a lot of communities have a wireless communications bylaw that regulates how and where you can locate cell towers. There's a bigger picture, which is that there's a federal telecommunications act that limits local control over where you can locate those towers. Currently, we have a use category, and Amherst is pretty well covered with cell service at this point, so I can't see them needing to enact any law, but. Mr. Schreger?
The other one I'm interested in is the bylaws are an incest to remove green buildings, solar or wind power. So it came up when we were doing the, uh, Atkins solar array, that we really didn't have a definition of self-standing solar farm that might, uh, so the closest was power plant, I think. Really, actually, for the kind of similar, similar issue that, uh, maybe not. But if somebody wanted to do a, you know, a self-standing solar array for whatever reason, that's not accessory to another use, is that something we would want to possibly encourage?
Yes, Ms. Crowder?
I'm interested in that, and there's been a fair amount of traffic from planners on the planners listserv of the state about that, so I know there's information. And again, my experience with Pioneer Valley Plan Commission is they're really good at serving communities that don't have much planning capacity.
Yeah.
So these, you know, this, all of this would be really helpful in a small town without a plan or a department. So rather than, th- them being limited to working regionally, I think, they, we haven't partaken of their services a lot, because we have a lot of planning capacity, but if there's a gap, they can do some legwork, and the staff doesn't have to do it, like researching the commercial solar farms, then it'd be great to go, eight hours or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Rosler?
I was going to put in a plug for using PBPC, um, in, for facilitating the transportation plan for the town. But I could easily support, um, either the transfer of development rights or green projects. And in a way, based on what Conny just said, that might be a better application of PBPC's resources. They already have a representative on the Public Transportation and Bicycling Committee, and they have provided a little bit of input. I don't know, do you have a difference beyond that?
No, I'm, I'm just nodding in agreement with you that my experience with them has been through, with transportation, and that's one of the areas that they, that's a, that's a good regional use of their expertise and consulting, basically, because our transportation here really is regional, well, most, a lot of it is. The bus, trains, that, that part of it is, but I, I'm just agreeing with you, you know.
So, if I might, if you're gonna make recommendations, and you had three different ones, I would include this, but it's the third, the third in the for all.
Transportation.
Yeah.
Is it?
Facilitation for our transport, our nation transportation plan.
Okay, we, we. One, one at a time, please. Chris?
Would that be listed under other valley vision strategy?
Yeah, I think so, I don't think it's the other one.
Yeah. How would you phrase that, Mr. Rosler?
Facilitation, um, with development of the town's transportation plan.
Mm-hmm. Facilitation with.
Development of town transportation plan.
Okay, so we have three options checked here, transfer of development rights of farmland preservation by laws ordinances, by laws ordinances to promote green building, solar, wind power, and other facilitation with development of town transportation plan. So then there's a space at the bottom, which is approved by. Do we want to take a vote to approve this? And so would someone make a motion?
Make a motion that we, that we, uh, we approve the, uh, three strategies that you just iterated.
Second, any further discussion?
I wonder if you would, um, take a friendly amended amendment to designate our chair as the contact person?
I was gonna suggest whoever, who is our PBPC liaison, you are.
So, so it'd be Stephen?
That's what I was gonna recommend, and that our existing liaison be the designated contact person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it Stephen?
I like a lot of commas in my sentences.
Okay, this is the planning board. Okay, um, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
First come, first served. Everybody, we were the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We were the first ones to approve valley vision. Maybe we'll have this.
The first to vote?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, um, upcoming planning board schedule. At this point, we had meetings scheduled for December seventh. How is that sounding for, um, meeting our, the needs of our citizens?
Yes, it is good. On December seventh, we have, um, the Montessori school. They did submit a cycle review application for expansion of their building in South Amherst and Pomeroy Lane. You also said that you wanted to have a discussion of the Gateway Visioning Report and how it might be incorporated into the master plan. You talked about that back in, I think it was September, and haven't really, um, thought about that or talked about it much since then. So, I think that was going to be a meeting with the ARA to, was it? No, you had your meeting with the ARA. It was just going to be a mea, a meeting to discuss whether, um, and vote on whether you wanted to adopt the Gateway Visioning Report as part of the master plan. We wanted to have it on the agenda. I think there was an opportunity to vote earlier on in the fall, and perhaps it was Jonathan O'Keefe who suggested putting it on the agenda so that, um, everyone in the community would know about it, and then, um, you know, could come and speak about whether they thought this was a good idea or not.
And everyone's still open to that idea or opposed to it?
I'm totally remembering that there was some confusion about in what form would it be incorporated or how to incorporate, and that was sort of, we were pondering that, so I don't know how we get clear on that.
Chris?
Many of these reports are incorporated by reference in the master plan. So there's a list of reports that have been done in the past, including the open space and recreation report and other things that have been incorporated by reference. So I think that's how we would go about doing this, or at least that was the suggestion that Jonathan Tucker had made. So you wanna keep that on your schedule for the seventh of December?
Sure.
And, and then there was one other thing. A fellow named Ray Olson, who owns a number of fish stores, wants to talk to you about his potential plans for redeveloping the Bioshelters property up in North Amherst on Sunderland Road. He has some good ideas about that, and he wanted an opportunity to introduce himself to you and, um, just, you know, give you a little bit of a sense of what he's thinking about doing there so that he might get some feedback to you about whether you think this is a good idea or not, so.
Because he opens a fish store and down to any of those.
I hope this isn't just a fishing expedition.
For the hell of it, so.
I have a quick question, just like I.
Close to this.
I know that prospective developers and property developers meet with the staff and get that kind of stuff. We might be then in a permit granting role with this person on this property. Is it appropriate, or do we have a history of having these casual conversations saying, yeah, we think that's a good idea or that, or not, because we would be adjudicating a permit?
We do have a history of this, because we just did it recently with the, um, survival center. We had them come before us and make a presentation about what they were thinking about doing and asked if we had any comments.
And the beoks.
And the olympiochs, that's right.
Okay, that answers a question.
So I don't see a technical problem with this. I mean, it seems like an interesting question.
Is this the place where there was a, uh, fish, uh, place to, to, yeah, yeah.
Fish and basil.
Who has much different plans for that? And then you also have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first of December. I suppose if you're lucky, you won't have to meet then, getting the applications and.
I thought we decided not to.
I thought we thought so, yeah.
Did you, did you decide not to?
Yeah.
I must have written that down.
I forgot, no.
If you want to have your own meeting.
Decided, that's consensus, not to meet.
Authorize Krista F. on our behalf.
She might bring us all our Christmas gifts.
So what's our, what would our first meeting in January be then? First of all, Monday?
It'd be January.
The third?
Fourth.
Oh, I don't.
Fourth?
I didn't bring my, yes.
I don't have a calendar.
It's whatever the first Wednesday of the month is. Generally meet on the first and third of the month.
Okay.
So that would be the fourth and the.
By not meeting on the twenty, I'm sorry.
Fourth and the eighteenth.
Go ahead.
I, there's, there's no pending business for the twenty-first, so we're not holding up development?
We're not.
Okay.
So January fourth followed by the eighteenth.
Team up here.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Enthusiast.
We have four in favor anyway.